Alrighty, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is January 16th. We have all members of council present. If everybody can just rise please for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief White, would you do us the honors?
A little shameless, but tonight could be appropriate.
It's very appropriate. Put it right up front here.
A very special flag from Rich Sloan who did today this year. It's still on display at our town.
Is that the one that was on the fire truck?
It was. It was Santa's leg.
Patrick, you'll have to tell everybody how much Oviedo loves UCF because those flew on the Santa around town.
If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer, please do so at this time. Father God, as we embark on this new year, Lord, we ask for your blessings and protection of this community. Ask for your safety and protection for all of our city departments. Lord, guide us and direct us. Give us wisdom in the decisions we make. Protect our military service members, Lord. Embrace honor and we serve you. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Chief. Now, we have many students in the back visiting us for a government class today from Valencia College. Another fine institution. Any of you looking to transfer over to UCF eventually? Raise your hands. Let's see how many. Patrick, every one of them. There you go. Rich, you'll expect some of them over at the college soon? Alrighty, at this time I'd like to call our meeting to order. It is 6:32 PM and as I mentioned earlier, we do have all members of council present this evening. We have two ceremonial items on the agenda this evening and due to time constraints, we are going to flip those around and we're going to take care of the UCF proclamation first. We have Patrick Ransdale from UCF here to accept it. So I'm going to read it in its entirety and then council will join me down in front and we will present this to a well-deserving team. Now, I'm not sure if anybody knows this or not, that UCF won a pretty big bowl game, went 13-0 and are the national champions. So we're going to leave it just at that. Give them a round of applause. And Patrick, you do know that since we've been flying the flag in front of City Hall before each game day, you guys have not lost.
That's right.
So we will continue that tradition next year and you can thank your athletic director, Danny White, because we were at a chamber luncheon and it got handed to me and I was respectfully told to please fly this flag because Mayor Dyer was flying one. So we took it up and it was awesome. What a season, I gotta say. But we have proclamation here from the city of Oviedo, very similar to what the governor presented you. It reads, "Whereas Florida is home to the country's best college football programs, having claimed 11 national championships between the University of Florida, the University of Miami, and FSU," I guess that is, right Drew? FSU. Drew, how'd FSU do this year? Just curious.
One ball case.
Alright. We are just checking. Just checking. Those Gator fans, how'd you all do? Oh, I'm sorry. "Whereas the University of Central Florida Knights won the American Athletic Conference Championship by beating the Memphis Tigers 62-55 on December 2nd, 2017." How many of you out there were at that game? That was one heck of a game. "Whereas on January 1st, 2018, the UCF Knights completed an undefeated football season by beating the Auburn Tigers in the Peach Bowl 34-27." Round of applause. "Whereas the UCF Knights are the only undefeated team in the NCAA Division 1 football this season. And whereas on November 11, 2017, the Auburn Tigers, who lost to the UCF Knights, beat the Georgia Bulldogs 47-10. And whereas on November 25th, 2017, the Auburn Tigers, who lost to the UCF Knights, beat the Alabama Crimson Tide 26-17. And whereas the college football playoff final on Monday, January 8th, 2018, was between Alabama Crimson Tide and the Georgia Bulldogs," and I'll ad lib for second place, "who both lost to the Auburn Tigers, who lost to the UCF Knights." Now therefore, I, Dominique Saint Pierre, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of Oviedo, Florida, do hereby proclaim that the UCF Knights are this season's best college football team and will be recognized as the 2017 college football national champions in Florida and the city of Oviedo. And I have signed it. It is sealed. Congratulations." That was one heck of a ride. Now Coach, is it Hubel or Hoofel?
Heiple.
Heiple. Okay. Coach Heiple is going to continue the signing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Patrick, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Want me to give you this? Let's just put this in. Forget it. Put that up. Will we do that? Put it up. Okay. There you go. Thank you, Patrick. There's some folks gathering, right?
Yes. So we play the number 11, right, Cincinnati Bearcats in 26 minutes, so we're going to beat them.
Patrick, good. Can you go with that?
No, we will.
Alright.
We'll show everybody.
Thank you. Congratulations. I'll head it, but it's online. So I'll have, you get it for, I'll have stacks. Nope. Uh, yes. Oh, you know what? We do have, we have one more. Yeah. Forgot about that. The next ceremonial item we have is we have a presentation to the fire department from Margie Sloan. Margie, why don't you come on up? Would you like the podium? Does that be easier for you? Yeah? Okay. Guys, why don't we slide that back over?
Thanks. My name is Margie Sloan, photo art designs, and I'm a 30-year resident of Oviedo. And first of all, I'd like to thank you for providing me the opportunity to recognize Oviedo's dedicated, award-winning first responders. Today, Oviedo Fire Chief Lars White and his team had a somewhat busy 2017, and even entertained. His fire rescue teams covered everything from the destructive hurricane armor, local flooding, house fires, and vehicle crashes, to a huge brush fire that threatened the Live Oak Preserve community, medical emergencies, water rescues, and much more. Our fire and rescue department has been on the forefront of community safety issues such as developing a comprehensive emergency management plan, the implementing of community-wide tornado sirens, and supporting the Florida Surrendered Infant Law and a safe haven for newborns. Oviedo's fire and rescue personnel are always on the job in good times, as well as the challenging times, often leading their families to ensure the safety of the community. During the 2017, we saw these dedicated professionals at awareness programs such as American Heroes Airshow and actively participating in our many community events, from leading parades to thrilling neighborhood children by continuing the tradition of bringing Santa to nearly every Oviedo neighborhood, as Dominic mentioned. In 1950, Oviedo's first fire station was built. As the population of Oviedo has grown, so has the need for the bigger and more stations. When the new fire rescue station at the Boston Hill location on SR 434 was under construction, I was just fascinated, being a photographer, with the architecture's graceful lines and interesting elevations. I started taking photos as soon as Station 1 was put into service in 2015, I think Lars, wasn't it? Okay. I have many digital variations from watercolor to black and white, but I like this colorful digital version of Fire Station 1 the best. I'm taking the liberty on behalf of the Oviedo's many residents to thank our hometown fire and rescue team with this gift to let them know how much we value and appreciate their service.
Oh, wow. Looks like it was the Oviedo award-winning. We will be honored to display that. That's gorgeous.
It's a beautiful building and it's still wonderful people who are committed to protecting our community. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Margie. Thank you so much. Now, is that going to lead to a firehouse? Is that going right to your house? I'm going to display it in the firehouse. You're going to pick it up in front of the picture. There you go. Margie, you'll display it for a little bit, but is that going with you on retirement? We'll see. Just a little bit. Margie, thank you so much. Round of applause. Alrighty, so moving right along, we are up to the approval of our minutes from our last meeting. It's hard to believe it was December 4th, so six, seven weeks ago. I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Looks good.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes of December 4, 2017? Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next order of business, the public comment portion of our meeting. This is the time if there's anything on anyone's mind that pertains to city business, that's not on the agenda, can come on up, take your three minutes. I have no written request. Anybody in the audience?
Mr. Mayor, on this one, if anybody has anything to say on the discussion items would now be the appropriate time, or will there be an opportunity later?
Now would be the appropriate time. Hearing none, I will close public comment and I will move on to the consent agenda. That is items five through 13.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second. Motion second. Any discussion?
Looks good.
Alrighty. Hearing none, call the vote.
I just wanted to point out that we've got a resolution on here honoring all of the people who helped with hurricane debris pickup, especially in Parks and Rec and Public Works. And I just want to give a shout out to those guys again. I know we've said it before, but they kept the toilets flushing and the roads working, so thank you, everybody.
It was a great job by all. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Moving along, we have no public hearings, we have no first readings, we have no resolutions. So we're going to go right down to discussion items, which is all the way to number 17. Give me a moment here to catch up. First discussion item we have is the purchase of property adjacent to Round Lake Park. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb for background and introductions, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for council to provide direction regarding the purchase or possible acquisition of three lots adjacent to Round Lake. The three lots, we learned about this at our December 4th meeting. At the time, it appeared that the lots were for sale, but we also had information saying that lots were pending. The property comprises about 0.48 acres. We did reach out to the property's, property owner's representative, and we did find out, confirm that the properties were for sale. Mr. Groot did conduct an analysis of the property. He and I concur that if council were to give us direction to move forward, that we would have a purchase, an offer of $50,000 to purchase the three properties. We have also prepared a purchase agreement there that was attached to your memorandum. It's an option agreement that basically allows us to put $100 down in beginning and then pay the rest at closing. So tonight, we would ask for your direction on whether you wish us to move forward with the purchase of the three lots.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, this is a discussion item. Who would like to lead it off? Norwood?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Groot? I have a quick question for you, sir. As you know, from the December 4th meeting, I wasn't happy the way this came, but in your discussions with the agent, is everything in order here? And, you know, did other people have a shot at this? Did it ever get back on? Because I don't like the way it came to us, but if you're satisfied that everything's in order, then that's good enough for me.
If this is accepted, it'll, everything will be in order. I mean, we still have to make the offer to Mr. Alford.
Okay. Alright.
This is within the range he discussed and this does boost it a little bit above the bottom because it provides for the city to pay closing costs and the like. So it's a very reasonable offer.
Okay. That's fine. Thanks, sir. Anything else?
I was wondering why we were volunteering the closing costs. It's not customary in this part of the state.
No. Like I said, he said his range was between 50 and 60. In order to get to a quick resolution as opposed to back and forth, I mean, that would provide you the opportunity to say, this isn't just 50, it's 50-plus. So that's our bottom line offer. I mean, that, you know, there's all sorts of ways, as you know, there's all sorts of ways to crack these eggs. And I just thought that was one way to do it, which is, and quite frankly, typically, you will have not, well, not typically, but very often sellers' agents will say, well, this is the government, the government's taking the property even though you're not, so the government should pay closing costs, you know? So you get that back. So this is an opportunity to have a one-time offer, which you can legitimately say, because I told Mr. Alford that there's no funds, at the time I talked to him, I said, well, you know, there's no funds available right now. So this would just, are you interested and what would your range be? And he gave me this, that this would be the ability to have a one-time offer that you could adhere to in good faith. That's my, that's the concept up here. I don't know if it's perfect or not, but that's the concept. That make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Anything else?
Well, I mean, I'll just add that if we can find funding without affecting, and I know some of the funding might come from some savings in other departments, if that works out to be true, it's always great to purchase additional parklands as we've done numerous times over the years when they become available. You know, as far as us paying for the lean search and the dock stamps, this is such a small purchase, it's not going to amount to anything. I mean, the dock stamps are going to be $350. And title search on 50 grand worth of property can't be that much, so.
And just by the way, this contract, what it provides is that for $100, there's an option, there's a promise that you would have the ability to accept their offer by March 1st. So this isn't, you know, this is still, I'm going to, I'm going to Mr. Alford saying, funding isn't assured still. You all have not determined definitely, as I understand it, to appropriate the money, but you would consider it with the contract an option in hand. Yes, sir?
Well, that's all I would add to it. I mean, if Parks and Rec Department thinks it's an appropriate purchase, I mean, it would be nice to kind of complete more of the lands around the lake. I would think after, this was successful, that we would own most of them except one or two on the north side, if I'm not mistaken. I think we'd have just about everything, so, you know, let's see what comes, comes out of it, as far as I'm concerned. Anything else, anyone?
I just want to, this is totally independent of the purchase of the corner lot that we were applying for the grant. We're still going forward with the grant application? Yes. Okay. Thanks.
Alrighty. Anything else? Bob, anything? You good with it?
I'm fine with that.
Alrighty. So Brian, what do you need from us? Just consensus to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Or do you prefer a motion?
consensus to move forward.
Alrighty. Is there consensus, council? It sounded like we had 5-0. Can I, can I hear some yeses?
Yes.
Yes. I heard an okay. That works. Alright, you've got 5-0 consensus. Move forward and try to purchase. Alrighty, next discussion item. Now, this is very unusual for those in the audience that we don't have a packed January 16 agenda, but that's only telling me that we're going to get walloped on February 5th, so we shall wait and see. But let's see, this one, the subject of the next discussion item is Community for a Lifetime Committee/Senior Programming Committee. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request, council, to review the participants of the proposed Senior Programming Committee. At your November 20th meeting, you directed us to bring a list of individuals interested in participating in the committee so that you could review it. It's recommended that you provide us with direction regarding the committee's membership.
Alrighty. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. It's a discussion item. Does anybody like to lead it off?
Well, it says here, request to review participants. We didn't really take names and addresses. Patrick and I attended the meeting. I wrote down Jerry, who's here, Art, Brad, and Yolanda. It was a very informal meeting. It was actually a very good meeting because we got a lot of good ideas out of it. I'm not sure what else you're looking for. We just scheduled a follow-up meeting for next Monday at City Hall, and I've received a few emails from a few other folks that are interested in coming. I'll just go through my notes and tell you some of the ideas that we came up with. We really are looking at a three-pronged approach here. One is a program, a set of programs for seniors that the city can sponsor or at least advocate, whether it's a golf league. I already have a guy that's willing to set up a bowling league. Art, one of the men at the meeting, volunteered to try to set up a bicycle club for biking on the trails, things of that nature. Then there was some discussion on making, either through the website or some other function and awareness program for services outside the city's functionality that could be provided for citizens in need. And that ran the gamut between, you know, elder services to support caregivers, to Meals on Wheels types programs, classes for banking services, computer services, all kinds of things. And then the third prong would have been to recommend, well, more recommend other services that are available. And along those lines, I met with some ladies at Florida Hospital of all places that are probably trying to talk to all of you, so I spun that into a seniors program. And they have programs that they're willing to set up out here, either lectures or services. We're going to go to the faith-based communities to see what they offer. I believe the Baptist Church is having a luncheon, Brian, in March.
Yes, sir. They invited us to speak on March the 8th, and so I took the opportunity to say, well, to tell them about Mr. Britton's initiative, and they're going to let us talk with their group as well.
So we're going to do that. Other than that, I think we're still a little early in the process. I'm not sure, I was using this kind of as an informal ION-type process where I wasn't sure we wanted to have a formally appointed committee. If that's the case, we don't really have a list for yet because we haven't had that many meetings and we haven't had, really taken names and addresses from folks. I will say that most of the folks live in the city. There was a caregiver lady, Mary Lou Conyers, who I don't think lives in the city, but she provides services in the city or is willing to provide services in the city. Other than that, I'm open for questions.
Alrighty. Any questions from anyone?
Got room for lots more? I keep sending names your way, so hopefully you're connected with these people.
Yeah, I'm just sending them a standard response at the next meeting is. I am making a clarification. A lot of them are saying, I want to be on your senior center committee. And we've made it fairly clear that we don't have a senior center, but we, maybe one of the outputs would be, what facilities do we have that we can repurpose? Or if they're not fully utilized, to take downtimes to designate for senior services? And I know we've got a lot of facilities. We looked at some actually Monday that may be candidates. So that's kind of up in the air, but there seemed to be a lot of interest in using the post office, which I had to explain that that's monetarily out of the, not feasible at this time, I guess is the way to say it. Not that it won't be in the future, but it's something maybe we can set it as a goal. So, yeah, I'm getting the names and people are showing up.
Well, today, I just happened to be driving down Lockwood and I turned into Riverside Park and looked in the big room. It was totally empty. So I was wondering if we might could use that for cards for now, because a lot of the calls that I'm getting, that I've been sending over to Councilmember Britton, it's people who live in that neighborhood who are interested in getting together for cards and maybe a meal that costs $5 or $6, which is kind of what happens over at the Winter Springs Senior Center. Is that something that we could do immediately? Possibly? And I don't know who to direct that question at.
Probably need to direct it to Brian and maybe through Drew. And maybe that's one of the things we can, we can get from staff is what facilities are being used for what purposes and where are the, where are the open gaps?
And even for like Riverside, I was thinking, well, maybe it's empty now because everybody's in school. And that might be a very good opportunity to partner, like Riverside Park in conjunction with the golf course, clubhouse, because summer is their slow time, but our facilities are packed out with all the camps in the summer. So when they're maybe a little slower on golf in the middle of the day in summer, the maybe they could go eat over there instead and come up with some kind of symbiotic thing.
If I can add though, isn't that the whole purpose of this committee? You're going to come back to us and identify what's free, what's not free?
I don't think we have that capability. That's got to come from staff.
Right. But I mean, that's going to be a component of it. It would, it's mine.
Yeah, that would, that would have to be. You know, what I would see.
What I'm trying to avoid is us, you know, debating what's available now, tonight. Let's, let's wait until the committee meets and we'll let Patrick, Drew, Brian get together and, you know, come back to the council with, you know, here's what we identified as free space and, you know, what could be available and what could be programmed and what could be used. And I mean, it's certainly a goal that every member of the council has supported many times and, you know, we have a working group now. Let's wait till we get the information back.
Yeah, I'm more looking for it as an output, a list of levels of interest for different types of activities.
Right. And then you can match it up with whatever.
And match it up with what facilities are available.
Right.
You know, there was an interesting article in the paper about these ladies who play tennis in Winter Park every week. Their combined total is over 500 years of life and there's only four of them, or six of them, I guess. And they play tennis every week. The average age is like 80, 80 years old or something.
Isn't there something called pickleball now that?
I got pickleball, but the point of the article was that a healthy lifestyle is a happy lifestyle and as you grow older, there's no reason why you can't exercise and enjoy your life.
What do you anticipate the life of these meetings to be until you'll be able to?
I don't know, but we're meeting, we're going to meet next week, so that would be a two-week thing. I think Patrick and I had set up to try to have something maybe by early April where we could.
So you're looking at?
At least formalize something, yeah.
Four or five meetings until you kind of, oh, that's reasonable.
If we need to do an ION community meeting, that's, that's something that's kind of up in the air right now. If we get enough interest and we send them out to cross-pollinate and spread the word.
And maybe that's one of the things we can get from staff is what facilities are being used for what purposes and where are the open gaps?
And even for, like Riverside, I was thinking, well, maybe it's empty now because everybody's in school. And that might be a very good opportunity to partner, like Riverside Park in conjunction with the golf course clubhouse, because summer is their slow time, but our facilities are packed out with all the camps in the summer. So when they're maybe a little slower on golf in the middle of the day in summer, the maybe they could go eat over there instead and come up with some kind of symbiotic thing.
If I can add though, isn't that the whole purpose of this committee? You're going to come back to us and identify what's free, what's not free?
I don't think we have that capability. That's got to come from staff.
Right. But I mean, that's going to be a component of it.
Yeah, that would have to be. You know, what I would see-
What I'm trying to avoid is us, you know, debating what's available now, tonight. Let's wait until the committee meets and we'll let Patrick, Drew, Brian get together and, you know, come back to the council with, you know, here's what we identified as free space and, you know, what could be available and what could be programmed and what could be used. And, I mean, it's certainly a goal that every member of the council has supported many times and, you know, we have a working group now. Let's wait till we get the information back.
Yeah, I'm more looking for it as an output, a list of levels of interest for different types of activities.
Right. And then you can match it up with whatever-
And match it up with what facilities are available. You know, there was an interesting article in the paper about these ladies who play tennis in Winter Park every week. Their combined total is over 500 years of life and there's only four of them, or six of them, I guess. And they play tennis every week. The average age is like 80, 80 years old or something.
Isn't there something called pickleball now that-
I got pickleball, but the point of the article was that a healthy lifestyle is a happy lifestyle and as you grow older, there's no reason why you can't exercise and enjoy your life.
What do you anticipate the life of these meetings to be until you'll be able to-
I don't know, but we're meeting, we're going to meet next week, so that would be a two-week thing. I think Patrick and I had set up to try to have something maybe by early April where we could-
So you're looking at-
At least formalize something, yeah.
Four or five meetings until you kind of, oh, that's reasonable.
If we need to do an ION community meeting, that's something that's kind of up in the air right now. If we get enough interest and we send them out to cross-pollinate and spread the word, if we need to and have a community meeting where we get everyone together and do what we did with ION, break them up in groups and prioritize, that might be the end game we're looking for.
So it's reasonable to say by May.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you a little wiggle room, but sometime in May, might have a little something to present to us and just say, here's the activities, here's some space council members are looking for that we've identified with staff, and here's what we can do that's not going to change the budget that greatly. And if it needs to change the budget, well, then obviously that's a council decision.
Yeah. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
That sound good to everybody on the desk?
Do you think that you're going to, that this will be a board that will go on for years, that, you know, consulting, but like the arts board? We actually went through the-
Yeah, that's a formal board. I didn't perceive it as a formal board. I perceived it as something like ION, where if it'll live or die on its own.
Well, ION was a formal board. We actually, I think, did-
No, the members of ION weren't appointed. They just showed up.
Well, I guess that's my question. Do we want to appoint members or are you just going to have community meetings and whoever wants to come and give you ideas?
I think at this point, that's what I'm looking for. If we want to formalize it, make it like an advisory committee later on, that's something we can do later. If we want to do it now, it's fine, but I don't think it'll-
That just slows things up. I like letting volunteers come.
If you don't think you need it now, I think, you know, do your formal board, but as we get a center, like if we ever turn the post office into one, I think at that point, you know-
Yeah, then, of course, it's, we need to have an advisory committee. We can put citizens on it and-
So anybody can really attend this meeting?
Yeah. I'm not turning anyone away.
Anybody.
Taking all comers.
Right.
Well, but before you guys see this pop up on Facebook or someplace else, I wanted to fess up that I have already created a four-page list of services and programming that is available to seniors, because I put a little thing out there on Facebook and it turned into something exciting. And people started throwing out all these ideas. So I thought, well, let's see if there are other groups besides the government that already cover the services and activity that people want to see without additional taxpayer expense. So I've been trying to do that. So I'll forward that to Patrick, maybe stick it up online if it looks good.
These are just things that are out there-
These are just things that are already out there.
Making a reference list.
Yeah, consolidated reference list of 501(c)(3)'s, community clubs, just all around things you could do. And I'm in search of a guinea pig, and if there are any in the audience today, somebody who will be my senior activity guinea pig to go around and have something to do every single day, to have a full and thrilling life. Let me know, because I think I can keep you busy without the government having to create a senior center.
Yeah. That's the awareness component we're looking for. Let's make a list of things that, if you're interested in this, here's where you can go to do it.
And one other thing, I started a senior book club. It's at my house.
I'm not sure the government's creating a senior center. I think we-
Well, yes, that's an idea that keeps getting floated, so.
Of course, that's your opinion. My opinion would be is that we're creating a community center for the community to gather and for the seniors to be able to use.
Amen to that. I do not believe in age-specific buildings.
Yeah, that's-
But that's for a later discussion.
Yeah, and how about we'll let the users decide that, because maybe the seniors don't want the little rugrats.
Well, and that's the reason for creating the senior-specific book club, because there are existing book clubs, but-
Seniors like to go visit their grandchildren, have some fun with them, and then, what I'm told, I'm not a grandfather yet, but then you give them back. Anyway, I'm sorry, counsel.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, eventually, I mean, the point is, I think some people come away from what we just talked about, well, the eventual goal is to get a senior center that we have our own programming like other cities do. I mean, it's a great job by Councilman Britton to start this off, but eventually, I mean, it has to be the goal. You've had that post office for years, whether it's that or some other place. But I mean, I think we, you know, if we're going to do this, get all the ideas like you did with ION, you spun that into something great. I mean, but eventually, I mean, let's make the goal to get a place that that's our senior center and that they have it, because a lot of people do want it. And I would just caution, Councilwoman, you know, putting stuff on Facebook without running it by everybody else, really, it sends a bad message, because people see what we all put on Facebook. Well, they won't be seeing what I put on Facebook anymore, because I'm done with Facebook. I guess, you all told me to go and it just wasn't for me, so, but I know how it is, but don't put stuff on Facebook from one of us without getting it cleared with the city, because it causes all kinds of problems, we've seen happening for the last year. And, you know, it's helpful, but sometimes when one of us speak and we don't speak in unity, it confuses people. Well, this one said this, this one said that. So I would, you know, anytime I want to do something, I always call up Brian and Patrick or Lonnie and say, what do you think? And if they think it's good, I let them bring it to you. We really got to start following that, because when we get off on these things where one is on a mission and doesn't tell the other four, it causes a lot of problems. And this is too important to mess up. So everybody's harder than the right place. But, you know, let's get that goal to get that building and get a place where seniors can hang out and actually, you know, call it their own and it's not in Riverside Park one month and in the gym in another month. And, you know, let's make it that goal. We've set goals and we've made every one of them. So I think that would be good, but, you know, I have to hand it to Councilman Britton. He takes these things from nothing and makes them into something, but this is how we get there, you know?
All righty. Councilman Pollak, you're the only one we haven't heard from. So we'll finish with you.
Yeah, I think the idea and the concept is great. I do second what Councilman Hankin's saying about the post office and creating something out of that and making that a priority and a goal as well. The seniors do need a center for themselves as opposed to just a community center. They can create their programs and have their own place. We've got plenty of facilities for all other age groups in Oviedo, and the senior community has kind of fallen behind in having programs and facilities for themselves. So I think this is a great start. I think that we need to continue on and definitely make this a priority to kind of create some more facilities for them and activities.
You know, one thing I just want to mention too, in the last couple of weeks, having seen a lot of seniors in action, snowbirds and things like that, you know, one of the things that we should also consider, Keith, is good, is to actually get the people who are going to use it, because I can tell you, what I've observed in the last couple of weeks of snowbirds and people being in Florida, they create their own stuff, very easy things that they like to do, stuff that, you know, we may not necessarily want to do, but the places that they go are packed and they're picking their own things. They're very good at programming themselves. So I think, you know, having the people that volunteer to help out is great, but, you know, we need those 80, 85-year-old, even older, to come in, hey, this is what we want to do, you know? Yeah, make sure you hear those voices loud and clear too, because I can tell you, they're, they know what they want to do, you know? So it's all good.
All right. Good job. Good job, Keith. It all goes with the maturing of the community.
Which I am, along with the community, maturing. I am, I am. I can't wait till I can use the yellow tees at Twin Rivers.
You can use them anytime. All righty. So Brian, I don't think there was any action you needed on this item, right?
No, sir.
Okay.
If I could just clarify, everybody's cool with me at, once this little list gets formatted a little bit better. You're okay with me sticking this up? It doesn't purport to speak on behalf of anybody on council or the city. It's just a consolidated list to-
As long as it's just programs that are already-
Yeah, that's all it is. So I'm not attempting to set policy.
All right. Things that are in Orange County, Seminole County.
Yeah, things that are nearby that you can go to.
You're going to give that to Patrick and eventually maybe we can discuss it, whether we put it on our website as an awareness thing.
Yeah, it might be something good.
Well, there's like, you know, private law firms that are doing little seminars and stuff, but hey, it's free info. So I don't mind telling people.
You want to take your time and assemble it?
It's done.
There you go. All righty. Okay, so we're going to move along. We've got item number 19 is the federal lobbyist procurement. That one's going to have a little bit of discussion. Let's just jump over to number 20 real quick, if I may, because this is a quick appointment. Mr. Cobb, why don't you just give us a quick update?
Yes, Mayor. This is a request for the council to discuss the nomination of Ms. Mary Blake as the Seminole County Cultural Arts Council representative to the city's public art board. If you remember back when we adopted ordinance number 1600, one of the things that it did, it altered the makeup of the board to increase it to nine members, but also to allow for an ex-pecial member from the Seminole Cultural Arts Council. And so on December 15, 2017, the Cultural Arts Council nominated Ms. Blake to be that member to the city's art board. And it's recommended that you provide direction on the nomination of Ms. Blake to serve as an ex-pecial member of the city's public art board.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I'll make this easy. Is there anyone who objects? Is there consensus?
Is she a member of the Seminole Cultural Arts Council as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Perfect.
All right. Got consensus from everybody? You all have your actions? There you go, Brian. Five oh. Yeah, it is a great choice, actually. It'll do a great job. Now, seeing that Donna Bundy nominated her, we're assuming that Ms. Blake knows about this?
She does know about it.
Okay, yes. I didn't see anything from her. Everything was from somebody else. All righty. Move back over to item 19. It'll be the final item of this evening's agenda. We have the federal lobbyist procurement and priorities list. Mr. Cobb, why don't you give us background? Then I'd like to hear from Mr. Groot why he thinks an RFP is the way to go, and then we'll move into council discussion.
Hey, just want to let you know real quick on Mary Blake, looking at the thing, she did agree in one of the memos. She said she had, she did agree.
Oh, okay.
She did agree to come on board.
I hadn't noticed that. Thank you.
I talked with her about it before it even got put in the ordinance that-
I hadn't seen her since I saw that. I was just curious.
Yeah, she's in.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. At your December 4, 2017 meeting, you directed staff to continue looking at procuring a federal lobbying firm. We also specifically called A and Faye, the former federal lobbyists, to assist the city with its initiatives with FEMA regarding Hurricane Irma, and then other items that the staff might identify. Staff did go through the process of recommending different items that could be used for a federal lobbyist, such as advocating for the city at FEMA. Also assisting the city in seeking funding for the police headquarters, possible ladder truck and the fire department, looking at different water, wastewater, reuse water programs, stormwater programs, also looking at the possibility of a senior center if there was money available, seeking funding for the regional stormwater pond in the downtown area, as well as streetscaping, while also advancing Phase 3 of the State Route 426, January 19 widening, and then also looking at security items, something specifically maybe going forward to homeland security, see if there's a way that we could beef up security at City Hall or other city facilities. Obviously, you know, there's always the big worry about the water plant and the sewer plant, but also other facilities where the public is there. Tonight, we were just seeking your guidance on how you wish for us to move forward as far as procurement of federal lobbyists.
Mr. Cobb, they were working on something for us also with reclaimed water. Is that still on the list?
That's, yes, that would be one of the items that we would also, I think it's in, one of the items that we did recommend.
All righty. And how about sewer also should be on the list?
Yes, sir. That was one of the items we recommended.
Okay, good. Thank you. Mr. Groot, can you give us some background on why your recommendation? Because just my thought process, and I'm only speaking because I'm in the center here, but, you know, it's, we've had them on before. They've performed well, so just-
My recommendation is based upon just the general nature of procurement and the methodology that was used for the state lobbyists. That being said, there's some selection processes that relate to matters that are so sensitive and that the council has to be, you know, secure with in terms of legal counsel, lobbyists, and the like, that, you know, if there's a rationale that y'all feel, that, you know, you feel particularly comfortable with a group, they represent you. So that's outside the normative areas of procurement processes too. And also, if there is exigencies such as the FEMA reimbursements, which is, I think, was addressed by the Orlando Sentinel last weekend on its editorial page, you know, that'd be another reason to depart. My rationale was just normative procurement principles, which is you generally opt for competitive processes. But there's exceptions to that too. Bill Sundstrom's an example. We didn't go out for an RFP to determine who would deal with the Giuliani issue. There's other examples, so if those thoughts help, I hope they do, but if there's any questions, please let me know.
Great. Let me open this up for discussion. It is a discussion item. Mr. Cobb, do you have any last words or are we good?
No, sir.
All righty. We'll start with Councilman Hankin.
I haven't called you deputy mayor yet.
That's good. You roll.
You haven't called me deputy mayor yet either.
I haven't called you deputy mayor either.
That's good. You know, with this, I don't really look at this as appointing or just handing this over. I look at this, and you guys were here when we had him, I look at this as reinstating him. You know, when we let Al Cady and Faye go, it was because of the recession. They were doing a magnificent job for us. And I kind of like having a guy that used to hang out with Reagan and Ford and knows all these people, has been around a time or two, and has treated the city with, you know, the utmost respect through the years and has had great results. So, you know, they were humming along. The recession came and we had to tell them we couldn't have them anymore, and they didn't understand it, and it was really painful at the time. So for me, this is just the reinstatement of a guy and a firm that has done a magnificent job. And as Mr. Groot pointed out, the article in the Sentinel pointed out that cities are having a hard time getting their FEMA money back. And I think Mr. Boog told us at the last meeting, you know, that's over $1 million for us, and sometimes you need some heavy lifters to go get that back. You know, we can't just keep making up $1 million. So, you know, if you want to look at some savings, maybe in April, we can go put out an RFP for state lobbyists and see how much we could save there, because this is the same thing, and I'm going to have federal stuff. So I am 100% in favor, and like I said, I don't look at it as where we're putting these guys on and we need to talk. We know them. We've been there multiple times and they performed, and I just feel like we're reinstating them, and it kind of feels good, because I didn't want them to leave. So, and I think they'll go and do a good job. They'll certainly help us get that $1 million back, a little over $1 million, I think. And we need that help, you know? As good as our staff is, sometimes the way Washington is, everybody knows, you turn on the news every night, it's a big twisted mess, so you need somebody who's dealing with this all the time. So I'm 100% in favor of bringing them back. And I think it's at the price we had them a few years back. It's no change. It's just a reinstatement.
Great. Anybody else?
Is this, they, the last time we had them, they were under contract, correct?
Yes.
And the contract, it really, correct if I'm wrong, it really didn't end. We, I mean, we can, this could almost be just an amendment to that contract to bring them back.
No, I think we terminated it.
It was completely terminated?
Yes, sir.[1692.51]
Yes, sir. I believe the city manager at the time terminated, sent them a letter, terminating the agreement.
Okay. All right. I agree that, you know, this is very specific to what our needs are. They're a organization that has done this for us in the past. We're confident in their abilities, and it's not, you know, it's not just an everyday widget that we can pick up. It's very specific. So I don't have a problem. You know, I'm a big proponent of a bid process, but for this, it's very specific, and I don't know if that's a-- if this is something that we can really kind of narrow down in a bid process. So I'm okay with this as long as Mr. Group thinks that, you know, we're not circumventing any process.
No, and to go to your point and the point raised by Councilmember Henkin, it really can be deemed a re-institution of a specialized service, one of which you, you know, legal service, lobbyist services and the like are typically exempt from competitive bidding. I mean, you can have-- you can go through those processes, but they really-- the real key is, is the governing body of the city, county, or whatever, comfortable with that person or firm serving as their lobbyist, representing them before other governments, or their attorney representing them before the courts, or the like. It's a unique beast.
Great. Anything else, Councilman?
I'm good.
Anybody else like to go next?
You want to go?
Go ahead.
It still is driving me nuts, the thought that everybody up here thinks that FEMA operates based on who you know and not based upon its own published rules. If we qualify--
Have you ever dealt with the federal--
They may not be fast, but they will not deprive us the funding if we follow the rules that they've set out. So putting that on the list, I just think that is a waste of money when we could use that for something else. A little over a year ago, I asked the fire chief if he thought we needed a ladder truck, and his response was, "Not really." So if we're going to be sending somebody, pay him $60,000 a year plus more to go get us a ladder truck, and our own fire chief has told us we don't really need one--
Hang on just one second.
Do we need a fire truck, a ladder truck? Because at one point, you told me it's not really a big deal.
I'm not quite sure I ever heard that.
I was the opposite.
I was all excited to get on board with a ladder truck during campaign season, and I was told, "Well, I don't really need one. It's not a--
We bought some time when we disposed of the previous ladder truck. We had a ladder truck that was substandard. In fact, it was--
The rolling toolbox.
It didn't have a tanker pump, and we added that capacity to it and had some real safety concerns with it. As we entered into some really difficult economic times for Oviedo with an aging fleet, we made a decision at that time, it was best suited to dispose of it, still had a little value. In fact, we were able to begin to replace our fire engine pumpers, which was a more critical need in our transport rescues. We bought, Councilwoman, about ten years of time there, but the mass amount of high-rise buildings that we are experiencing in town, hospitals, I won't even go where the future of what is forecast for our community as well, but all of these buildings over here, although they are sprinkled properties, the attics are unsprinkled. And unfortunately, Florida state law does not allow us to force that onto the builder developers. There's a statute that prohibits it. So we're kind of buckled. That would give me some comfort, but we, in essence, can't affect rescues on the third floor and above of all these properties, townhomes, et cetera, of which I live in one.
Are you saying you can't get a third floor of buildings at this time?
Well, they have-- no, they have built into the codes means of egress. But if that means of egress is blocked, and they're unable to exit from that avenue, then their only other exit is through the windows from us. So ground ladders are insufficient for that. But it's not just that. It's the complexity of these buildings are so close together. Aerial operations aren't just for the building on fire. They're for the adjacent properties as well. We have to have master streams that are up and above. It doesn't mean that it is a critical thing right here today at this moment. What I can tell you is fire chief, and the next fire chief is going to tell you that the community is moving back to that area of concern. We have just been noticed by ISO. We're going to have an inspection in early February. We're preparing for that. I don't know what that will render us. We hope to hang on to a Class II rating, but with the growth that we've experienced, we've likely lost points in some areas as well, as well as our water system and so forth, capacity, flows, and need. So, yeah, the town is moving towards the need for a ladder truck. But our issue back then was to replace an aging fleet of pumpers to start with. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Okay.
Our third floors, most of the third floor of residential, does that have sprinklers inside? Because now I'm starting to think, we need to figure out how to get a fire truck now, a ladder truck now.
I'm not going to tell you this is life and death, and this must be done at this exact moment. Things come as the economy affords us those opportunities.
You make it happen if it's a safety issue, though, so--
Yeah, it's something we strategize. The directors meet each year in budget deliberations, and we all talk and prioritize items as well.
Chief, we have access to a ladder truck currently in case of emergency, correct?
We do have one, yes. As part of the first response program, that has been helpful.
Thank you.
All right. Well, so we could use one, but we have access to one, so we don't actually need one. And right now, our president is Mr. Trump, and it seems like things are getting less frivolous and not like there's more extra to share with cities. So my thought is, I would like to see this-- I'm inclined not to get excited about it at all, but if we're going to do this, taking it to the RFP stage would at least let us go back to Alcalde and Fay and some of these other people and say, you know, "Tell us the years in which you accomplished this." I looked at their last RFP for us, and then I looked at the one from Apopka, which was pretty much a cut and paste. And they, they're accomplishing all these things, but they don't say when they accomplish them. So if we hire them for four years to go lobby for us, and they bring us back $240,000, well, we pay them $240,000 as their ongoing thing, plus their costs. So we would have been better off just spending $240,000 along the way.
Do you know that when we had them, they brought in directly or indirectly, but certainly they were there for every step of the way, a couple of million dollars. So even if--
For what did they do for us? That's the part I'm missing.
They, well, those were in the earmark days, but they brought in money here over $2 million.
But there's no more earmarks.
That doesn't mean you can't get them through grants and other stuff. And if you think for one minute that things in Washington don't work, you know, like you just call them up, "Hey, we're in line. Can we have our stuff?" It doesn't work that way, you know? And you need heavy lifters sometimes. I've seen these guys in action. You know, and frankly, if you want, you know, we can have them, and we can put the state lobbyist on furlough for a year. I don't see anything happening there, but I've seen it with them. But $1.2 million out there right now, and I'm sure we've reached out to FEMA, and it ain't here yet, and I can guarantee you it'll come there. But, you know, you can't tell them, you know, "What are you going to give us?" You know, it's like having tomorrow's paper today, but I can tell you that they're plugged in really well, well-respected, and it's a good thing.
I like your idea of maybe giving the state lobbyists a break, too. I like them, but there's not a whole lot of excess up there. And one of our biggest problems in Oviedo is that we are not poor, and we're definitely not poorer than anybody else. So if we don't have, like, an abundance of minorities or problems or whatever target things these different grants are seeking to alleviate, it doesn't seem like we're a likely target.
All right, so you're not in favor?
I'm not in favor.
Councilman Britton?
I guess what this is about is coming to a consensus that I'll throw my two cents in. You know, there are no more earmarks, but if you read the paper, there's going to be a huge infrastructure bill coming through Congress that is going to be, as far as I can tell, funded from the bottom up, which means we have to have very good justification. We have to have very good rationale for any projects we propose, and we're going to need to know how to do that. It's not going to be send a paragraph of, "We need to build a ditch out off of Mitchell Hammock for stormwater." We're going to have to have the ability to address regional benefits like widening Mitchell Hammock would provide. And it's going to be, I think it's going to be bigger than the stimulus bill that came out in the late 2010s. That was almost a trillion dollars. This is going to be in that kind of scale. I'd rather have someone helping me do that than doing it on my own, to be honest with you. As far as whether we should RFP it, Mr. Group, I think you took the words out of my mouth. It's, I don't know what I would get out of RFPs from four different lobbyist firms. I think they're all going to say the same thing. They're all going to gloss it over. I'm comfortable with these guys. They've proven themselves in the past. I trust them. So even though I do prefer to go through a procurement process, I think in this case, you know, we can make an exception. It's not going to break the bank. In fact, I'm almost wondering why Brian can't just do this on his own authority if we tell him to. But that being said, you know, let's get this done.
Might exceed the spending limit.
Yeah, when are we going to--
Doesn't seem like it's that--
Yeah, but I think it's the aggregate total.
Is this an annual contract, or is this really for four years?
This would be a thing where, well, that's one of the things that we haven't really discussed, is what kind of agreement would we do? Yes, under my purchasing authority, I could probably do a work order to get us through the end of the fiscal year, and then we could look at a different work order for the next fiscal year. We can do that. And that would probably have to come to council. But that thing, you know, with Mr. Group saying that the lobbying services could be, you know, procured without going through the formal process, the, to me, the aggregate total doesn't really come into play. Because you're right, Mr. Britton. If we looked at a multi-year contract, then that would definitely exceed my purchasing policy. But if we just looked at a work order to get us to September 30, which would probably take care of our FEMA request, and then look at what do we do, you know, next fiscal year, and tie it into our fiscal year, we can actually set it up through the budget, and then we can look at, if we want to look at a multi-year contract, we can look at it and bring it to council for, you know, for action. So, I mean, that was the idea that I had.
Everybody comfortable with that one?
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a quick question of the assistant city manager. You've been up and done some Washington stuff. Can you think right off the top of your head of three people who are outstanding federal lobbyists?
Three.
Three firms?
Well, just before you answer that, just have a seat.
I'm just wondering if you could think of three, because I can think of three, and Alcalde and Fay is not one of them.
Well, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, may I?
I'm just going to go for consensus, and we're going to move on.
Just let me just address that. First of all, you don't even know these guys. I know them. He knows them. Keith knows them. We have seen them in action. This firm, first of all, one thing that I always like about Oviedo, I like it about our residents. We show it every day, and I like it about us. We always do the right thing. And I can tell you, it was that time when we had to cut this and cut that, they were one of the ones. I mean, before this FEMA thing came up, I've mentioned it to Brian and other staff that we should, even a couple of years ago, we should bring these guys back. You know, it's like having insurance. Nobody wants to pay for their homeowner's insurance, but then when they need it, they're glad they have it, you know? To navigate up there is just tough. And I'm sure there's lots of great firms up there, but when this guy has performed so well, and frankly, we cut him off when he was doing a great job, it's like, you know, you go win the World Series and then you break up the team. I mean, it's ridiculous. So there's lots of good people, but I hear where you're going, Mr. Mayor. You can call it back. But are you saying that we should have Brian do to get us through this fiscal year and let them start on--
Yeah, I'll wrap it all up in a second, yeah, because I haven't even gotten my--
Not voting, Andy. We're just looking for consensus.
Yep, that's all we're going to be doing. But, you know, one thing I will say is that the congressman that Patrick used to work for had a very good relationship with Alcalde and Fay and always spoke quite highly of him. So that's why I stopped you, Patrick. You know, there's local city right here in Seminole County that takes advantage of federal lobbying and state lobbying quite heavily, and seems to always pull in all these different grants and such that none of the other cities, when we sit together at mayors and managers, as we did today, even do exist it. So--
Which city is it? And where are they getting?
It's one of our cities who is very innovative in Seminole County.
Do they work with Alcalde and Fay?
They work with a different firm, but with a former congressman, and they do quite well. So it's, Councilmember, you can just vote against this--
Okay.
--and then just move on.
So the people getting the money are not with Alcalde and Fay, who everybody wants to go with without investigating other opportunities and the success rates of other people. That's blows my mind.
Yeah, that's fine. But being a member of a council, when you're on the losing end of a vote, you support the rest of the council, and we just move on. So I was there with them. They did a very good job under trying circumstances. I will, however, say that we do need to see results. And, you know, getting us through the FEMA process up until September 30, as Brian suggested, I think that's a very good idea, and I'll look for consensus shortly. But, you know, lobbying is results-driven. The state lobbyists every year have been able to get something into the budget for us and get it back, and we'll see how successful they are in this year's budget. So I think it takes time. I think it's like Councilman Henkin said, you have to give them a little bit of time to build up the rapport that's needed, but there's plenty of things on this list that, you know, I think Skip and Company can go out there and bring something home and, you know, prove the point that there is merit. If they're not proving the point, there isn't merit, well, then I'll be the first to say that we have to cut them out. But to get through the morass of FEMA, unlike Hurricane Charlie, that took us 10 or 12 years to get all of our funds back, you know, I think that's a good idea. We'll just let them go walk it through the halls down there and figure out what's going on and what we need. So the consensus, I guess that Mr. Cobb is looking for, guys, is contract up to September 30, reevaluation in next year's budget to continue on. That will give them eight, nine months to start to show us what they can do, as opposed to us having to try to find things and ask them what to do. And that's one thing that the state lobbyists are very good at, identifying different projects or funding sources once we give them the project. So I'd like to see that from them, Brian. I'd like to see monthly reports from them, specific to us, not a generic monthly report that gets sent to every one of their clients.
Do we have a mechanism to fund this at this time?
It states it right here. It's actually going to be an appropriation from the fund balance.
Okay.
That would be my consensus. So is everybody, who would be in agreement? Let's start. Councilman Britton, you good with that?
I'm good.
Well, it would have been Deputy Mayor Britton. Councilman Henkin?
Yes, sir.
Say, I got your ones. I'm okay.
Yes, sir.
Good. And we know. That's fine. All right. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I think you got consensus to--
We've all been on that end of the stick, you know.
To--
Well, hopefully there'll be something.
Work order to get us to the end of the fiscal year.
I'm sorry?
A work order to get us to the end of the fiscal year.
Correct. Exactly as you suggested.
Okay.
We could feed a lot of seniors five-dollar meals for $45,000.
Oh, you know what? And if they hit the home run and bring us back half a million for us to renovate our community center through some unknown Indian tribal grant, then we've hit the home run. Everyone's giggling about that, but that's where the reclaimed money was going to be coming from. It was actually some sort of a tribal Indian grant of some sorts, and we came up just short on it. But we didn't give them enough time to keep working it. So what I say sounds like it's in jest, but it's actually true. I mean, there's so many different grant sources up there. It's just mind-boggling, and the names they come up with sometimes do make you giggle. All right.
Remember the meetings that we used to have that he would set up, and we would go there or would here, and you'd walk in, and you'd be in a room with like 50 people, and the first thing Senator Nelson would turn over to you. I mean, 50 people in there, but we were brought in there. First one, he's in the back of the room, I'm up there. Turns to me, "Councilman, tell me what you need in Oviedo." You know, you don't just get that just by walking in, "Here, I want a meeting." I mean, we used to try that on our own. How many times have we tried to get meetings with certain elected officials on our own, and we still haven't seen them? But when we had those guys, we're in in a minute telling the people's story, and it works. You all got to get in there. You know, it's almost like a necessary evil, you know? Nobody likes it, but it works, you know?
We'll fly up there if they want us to.
Not if the state gets their way, right?
What's that?
Not if the state gets their way. Then there's no flying without a--
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Well, no, you just have to justify what it is.
Yeah, why you're going. Yeah, that's, I'll talk about that in a second. All righty, Mr. Cobb, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. I had a wonderful time yesterday at the Martin Luther King Parade in the Celebration of the Park. I thought it was a great event. And we received an email today from Seminole County. The date of the county is February the 15th, and they're wanting to know if we would like to get a table. The table will cost $700, and so I wanted to see if you were interested in us getting a table for--
How much are the tickets to the event?
It does not say. It just says they're offering tables of 10 for $700.
Why don't we talk to one of our consulting firms that may be getting a table and see if they'll sponsor our table?
I'll see if we can do that.
And if you'd like, I'll make those phone calls.
Okay.
How many of us would be interested and go?
What city do you--
It's in the afternoon, usually February 15th.
Yeah, it's 11:30 to 1:30. It'll be a luncheon.
What day is that in the week?
Let me see.
Monday or Thursday?
Mm-hmm. Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday.
I better not. I better not.
Okay. Well, I'll certainly go. Councilmember will go.
Only if it's, only if it's at no taxpayer expense.
Oh, gosh, you know, all right, listen, I was sitting with Mayor Lacy today at our mayors and managers meeting, and, you know, no offense, don't take this the wrong way, it's really meant as a joke, but, you know, we've gone beyond covered wagons. I mean, you know, it's, we're a big city now. So, you know, sometimes you gotta change the mindset a little. But anyway, Mr. Cobb, I'm sorry.
All right, if there's interest, we'll get the table.
All right, yeah, let's, let's talk through, I got a couple in mind.
Okay.
If you send me a reminder email, I'll make a couple of phone calls, see if we can get somebody else to sponsor it, or, or we can get, you know, five or six seats at a table. That's probably about what we'll need.
That's all I have, Mayor.
That's easy. Mr. Groot, what you've got for us?
Looking forward to a great, great year and then nothing else.
Excellent. Look who goes first in the new year. Councilmember Pollak?
All right, so, I had a couple, a few ideas.
You actually made notes?
I do.
Huh?
I do. I feel like I remember things. I'm getting old. So, I was approached, well, I just lost it. I was approached by, by an individual that wanted us to, to just kinda take a look at our rules on, on short-term vacation rentals, you know, just, just trying to allow for some Airbnbs or other, other items. I mean, I don't know how much of a demand there'd be in Oviedo, but it'd be nice to, to, to kinda look at the rules on that and, and see if there's a way to, you know, allow them in certain areas or, you know, other places like that. So, you know, and I don't know if it's something that, you know, that the council would be, you know, up to...
Yay!
Why don't we get Councilmember Pollak the current rules, and the state's working on a whole gutting of the programs anyway, and it might not be something that we're gonna have to worry about if they have their way after the session?
Hey, very well could be. One of the things that, Mr. Shank did contact me, I talked to him about it as well, and he turned me on to a, an ordinance that was done in Miami that seemed pretty good. He also, that led me to an ordinance that was done in Fort Lauderdale. And one of the things that Mr. Shank had mentioned to me was that getting something in place before the state does do us in. And so it was something that I shared with Dr. Correa as well. Basically, Mr. Pollak, we would look at them as a hotel, in which they would not be allowed in a single-family neighborhood because of the turnover. And so that would, that would be, that right now, our permissible uses table doesn't allow them in a single-family residential. So, if there are folks doing it now, they're doing it without our knowledge. So, then one of the things that the Miami ordinance does is that it brings them into the light, and it requires them to obtain business tax receipts and, you know, make sure there's inspections and things like that. So...
Okay.
That is something that we are looking into.
Okay.
I'd like to share with us whatever you have so far.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Cobb.
Okay. I was, I was over on Oviedo Boulevard a lot over the holidays, and I, I was there in the evening time, and all the, the striping on the, the parking spots along Oviedo Boulevard is faded, faded away. Is that something that we have on the, on, on our agenda for, for next year or two, or, you know, upcoming months to, to stripe?
There are no stripings there.
It's nice when you ask questions that I can answer. I already have money budgeted for it. We actually have enough. We've already got it priced out. I'm just waiting for all the stuff to get done. Doesn't make any sense to do it and take a chance of it getting ruined.
Because I've seen cars parked all over.
Yeah, I'm just, it just, once everything's, we're pretty sure everything's done, then yeah, it's for this fiscal year, hopefully later. It'll be later, but I hope we get it done this year.
Okay, perfect. Let me make sure. Oh, the, the traffic lights. When are they gonna be activated? Do you have a...
This one, if it's blinking, it's blinking now, should be a few more weeks, a couple more weeks.
Okay.
Usually, the other one's gonna be a month still. We've got an issue, we have to get a Duke Energy Service run, power or something, so...
All right.
They're gonna be synced?
This one doesn't have the adaptive traffic on it at Alexandria. That's FDOT solely theirs.
Wouldn't FDOT sync it if they would?
They'll, Seminole County will sync it with the run along 434, but it won't be, it won't be synced with, one on, like Jessup will be synced with Mitchell Hammock, yes, but they're on separate systems, so to speak.
And, and you had sent out a, an email, and I thought maybe we could discuss that as well, on the median, I forget the name of the plaza, but the sushi pop?
Jordan Crossing.
Jordan Crossing. What's, what's the, are we removing that median? Are we gonna keep it?
Still getting, I have the, our consultant who designed the signal, did an analysis before the original design. They're still looking at the actual access and trying to evaluate, can it be opened up or not? Is it a safety factor? If not, there is full access into the plaza by turning left. If you're westbound on Mitchell Hammock, you can turn left at Jessup and go through Top Dog Car Wash, through a right-way easement, and come around to Jordan Crossing.
That's kinda squirrely, though.
But I thought that was the whole purpose of, that was the whole purpose of putting the light there.
Right, but we are actually...
To give one, one access point to, to those, to stop the traffic. I mean, you know, to, to stop the, or to increase the flow of traffic, because cars are stopping to turn and blocking traffic at that point, at the, where the median is now, if, that you were to open that back up.
You're, it, there's gonna be problems, yes.
Right.
Well, just so everyone's aware, because you weren't on council when it happened, I mean, when Top Dog was going in, that was a major concession that we worked on, and we actually worked on that concession with the very owner of the plaza in question, full well knowing that the light was going in and that, you know, these are the types of things that would occur. Now, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, but the second step of this is that eventually, eventually, the left-hand out of, outback, out of alehouse is probably gonna go away.
If we do it properly?
Because that was gone, and then we had to put it back because there was no other access point.
To do it properly, yes, sir. I would agree.
So, you know, that way, the shooting across Mitchell Hammock, which is, I mean, I'm sure the chief can attest to how many accidents are out in front of the alehouse there, people trying to make lefts and coming out of the second entrance, or that second entrance was even more dangerous because it was coming down the hill. I mean, the light makes it much more palatable, but I do think, I mean, in all fairness to the plaza, and to the car wash and the others, and eventually, when it goes through to the old Albertson's Plaza, we do need some wayfinding signs or something on that light, or somehow to say, you know, "Jordan Crossing, Top Dog, Alehouse."
Funny you mention that, Mr. Mayor. We're already working on to get a sign done.
Right. And just to tell people how to get into the plaza.
Boy, you started the conversation in-house, your staff.
So, is this, so is this something that, before you decide to remove it, that we would, we would have a discussion on, or...
Well, in my email that I sent out to you earlier, I told you I'm gonna provide you with a copy of the report once it's finished, and I still intend to do that so everybody can see it. The owner of the plaza will get to see it as well.
Okay, all right. Because, because I, I think that the median should stay, personally. Because that's, that was the whole purpose of putting traffic lights in, is to, to prevent those shooting out across the roads and stuff like that. So, and I, I think that there should be other medians in place, you know, closer down to where Mission Barbecue is, people go right across the yellow lines over there, and when they could go all the way around and buy Dairy Queen and come out that way.
Do you go to Mission Barbecue?
On occasion.
The entire corridor, the west part of Mitchell Hammock, West Mitchell Hammock, needs an access management study. I mean, honest and truly, we're, it's something that's on my, on my plate as soon as we can get to it.
Okay.
We need to have it done.
All right.
Share the report when you have it.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. I appreciate it.
Anything else, Bob?
No, I mean, and, and if you do decide to rip out that median, I would love for that, that curb to be smoothed out a little bit. I mean, I know, you know, that, that just scares me.
I understand, I understand. I've looked at it, and I still plan to get more, what we call RPMs, everywhere, markers put on top of it, the market, but it's actually, it's pretty close to spec, so...
I mean, but, but if you look at it, you can see all the, all the tire rubs on it already.
Yeah.
It's just gonna take someone to hit that hard.
Yeah, but you know what? If it's not squared off, if it's rounded and they hit it, they're flying over into the other lane.
Yeah, but they kinda roll up on it instead of hanging it. I don't know, I, that thing scares me.
It'd get reflected, so all over it.
All right. That's all I had for, for your area.
You're all done?
No, I, the other things, um...
You're like working at night.
Come on, geez. Come on, Pollak.
The holiday events were great, because this is the first meeting since we had all the, the holiday, the, the Christmas events.
Why don't you just lead off with that, thanks, and we move on?
And, "Go UCF in Jacksonville."
All right. There you go, Bob. Did you say, "Go, go Knights"?
Go Knights and go Jacksonville.
That's right, Blake Bortles. That, that's gonna be a fun game up in, um...
Boston.
Boston, yeah. There was a great sign put up, up in Jacksonville at one of the restaurants, something about the Jaguars are going to go beat the Cheetahs, or something like that. It was all over Facebook.
That's really all I had, just one thing. You guys kinda stole the thunder a little bit, but, you know, we've had a lot of big football games, a lot of good college games and UCF, but my goodness, we have an Oviedo kid. We all know him, watched him, he's one game away from taking us to the Super Bowl. So, you know, even if you're a New England fan and you live in Oviedo, I mean, if Blake could pull that off, especially, he's taken a little heat lately, you know, I mean, you gotta remember, this kid's 26, you know, he's one of us, and he's gonna stand there, you know, this weekend against Tom Brady, one game against, for the Super Bowl. So, you know, I hope Blake takes him all the way. I think if he gets past the Patriots, then they have a good shot. So, just wanna wish Blake and the Jags a good, a good thing. Man, Oviedo kid, one game away from the Super Bowl, how about that? Drew, how many times have we watched him out on those fields, right?
Coach.
There you go.
They manhandled the scalers.
You didn't coach him in football, because he's doing quite well at it.
Coach.
Okay, yeah, that makes more sense.
That's all I got.
Uh, Councilmember Slayton?
On Airbnb thing, I would love to be more proactive than just waiting to see what the state does, not to not allow it or to maintain the status quo, but to affirmatively say, "Yeah, we wanna do that in Oviedo." We don't have a hotel, other than the little Oviedo Lodge or whatever that is.
We have, we have two different folks working on bringing us a hotel.
Okay, but we don't have one right now. And Airbnb has turned out to be a really positive thing at the county level. I was talking to the head of the Seminole County Tourism Board, I don't know what it's called, Economic Development Committee or something. His name is, I think it's Gee or Gee, and he said that the hotels really fought that being allowed in the Lake Mary area, and that they had a banner year after, after it was allowed. So, there do need to be some limits on it. Right now, what's happening is people are just doing it. It would be better to create some guidelines, so people are doing it where we want them to do that.
Go get 4.0, guys. Go pass your government class.
So, if there's consensus from council, it'll maybe be a little bit more proactive and not just have it go unregulated. I think people wanna do the right thing. But I know somebody, you know, sold, some grandparent types sold their house, they were snowbirds, and before leaving, they secured an Airbnb opportunity in Oviedo, because they needed a place to go for like, you know, six weeks. So, it's not exactly a boarding house, but there's money changing hands. And I just think there's an opportunity for us to do, do something to allow people to make extra income. It might help with some of the affordable housing situations that are going on, people who might need temporary housing. I don't know, just throwing it out there.
Okay.
Anybody excited about this?
No.
All right. Well, then it'll continue to go on, unregulated, I guess. And also, come to the senior book club. It's at my house, which is the Lake Tur Memorial Chapel, February, what is it, February 1st is the first meeting, and find it on Facebook. Starting programming without government assistance, because we could do that.
Anything else?
Yep, that's it.
Councilman Britton?
Deputy Mayor, excuse me. Thank you. Uh, let's see. Let's start off with the MLK Parade and the, the breakfast the previous Saturday. Those were great events, they're annual events for us, and Brian, you were there, Megan, you were there both times. There were really good events. The parade this year was one of the best, and it really highlights us as a...
Parade was long this year.
Yeah.
A lot of participants in it.
You know, it really sends a, a nice spotlight on us as a city for, for doing that. I think the camaraderie and the fellowship we show is really commendable on our part. Not to pat ourselves on the back, but it's, it's a good thing. Shows who we really are. Saturday was the Colonel Nardo 5K race we had. I think it was the second one. I hope it's an annual event to celebrate his life, and I believe it's for a scholarship for two students at Oviedo High, which is a good thing. And finally, there was a Calno meeting back seventh of the month.
Calno still exists?
Calno still exists. It's a good thing.
Not according to mayors and managers today, but...
Well, they can, maybe we'll start coming to the mayors and managers meeting. Brian, can we, can we notice those, so we can all come to them?
Mayors and managers?
Yeah.
They won't let you in.
I understand.
That's why Calno still exists, because of the mayors and managers don't let anyone else in theirs. But it was at Seminole State, they've got, I believe, a grand opening of their student center, which is really cool. That's where we had the meeting. I think that's this Friday, if you haven't gotten an invitation.
Just so you know, I defended your right to have Calno.
Good.
Once again. As did the mayor of Castleberry, and others were non-committal, but there are a couple who just...
What harm does it do?
Doesn't do me any harm.
Doesn't do any, anyone any harm.
I think it's great.
At the Calno meeting, I did bring up the senior program, and lo and behold, Alderman's got a pretty good website with a list of their activities. I haven't got the Castleberries, but they say they have the same thing, so there's no reason we can't cross-pollinate. That's what Calno's for, cross-pollinate with what works for them, and steal it if we have to, you know, bring it over to our, our place and make use of their, their efforts already. So, I think that's all I had.
Great. All right, I'll be quick and brief. The city application, the app for City of Oviedo is in beta testing on Patrick's phone, I believe, right? Patrick has it, and Brian has it. They've been messing with it, so...
What's it called?
It's a City of Oviedo app. It's gonna be an app for your phone, and you can access all the different functions that are on the, the website, and there's some pretty cool features in it where you'll actually be able, like, let's say you see a street sign down, just take a picture of it, and goes right to staff, and, right? Isn't that how it works?
I'd rather have a badge and a light for my car, chief.
But they've been beta testing it, and I think the last I heard, Patrick, what, about another month, you're gonna play with it and make sure it's going along well before you roll it out?
Yes.
Four weeks or so, six weeks? What do you think?
If we push the gas pedal, we have it for six weeks.
Comfortably. Okay. Four to six weeks. All right. It'll be on like Google Play and Apple Store and things like that. Is that where people will go to get it?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, it looks pretty nifty.
Oh, you know what, Dominic? I forgot to...
Sure, great.
Patrick is doing a lot of legwork for the senior committee, background work, facilitating, so I wanna thank you, Patrick, for all your help.
Great job. We obviously, as everybody has mentioned, had a ton of events since we last all got together, and, you know, Drew, union staff did a great job all through Christmas. Chief, the Santa around town, of course, is always fun. Sound system was great this year. Santa told me, he said it was awesome. So, great job by, by the fire department. Drew, great job by your staff, because you had a lot of events. Which leads me into, we had the State of the City the other day with the Chamber of Commerce, and the State of the City went extremely well. Charles and I had a good time together, as we always do, and we presented all that's going on. But what was interesting is that there's the event list that was handed out at the event that's put together by our staff. And I thought that event list was awesome, because it lists every city event, not, not the Great Day in the Country and things like that, but our events, all 53 of them, I think there is, throughout the year. So, that I did take, and I pinned it up on Facebook for everybody to see, and just a way that everybody can know what's going on. And, I mean, a lot of these events are extremely well-attended without doing that, so hopefully it will be even more. Mayors and Managers was today, was the first one we've had in a couple of three months, and interesting discussion on the additional homeowners exemption that's gonna be on the ballot, and home rule. So, let's just say it got spirited on both of them. Right? I would say that. of them, right? I would say that.
That's a lively discussion.
It was a lively discussion. I, I can say this, because Mayor Lacy would allow us, allow us to, he is the only elected official in all of Florida, I think, who is in favor of the additional exemption, and he's all for eliminating home rule, but that's just Mayor Lacy. I mentioned the State of the City at the chamber, that went very well, everybody can mark their calendars, March 7th is the annual, our State of the City, and it'll be over at Oviedo on the Park, as it always is, the March 7th at, I haven't got all the details, but I think it's about 6 o'clock, right, Drew, is that, yeah, 5:30 or so, the food trucks will show up out there for folks who want to come on over and eat, open up at 6, we'll start the event about 6:30, and we'll go on for about an hour or so, as we do each and every year, and folks want to come out and see what's going on, and see a great PowerPoint presentation, there you are, you're going to put that together for us, so that way, get an idea of what's going on in the city, and actually get some facts of what's going on, rather than seeing what's going on on social media. But with all that being said, again, great job by everybody, and Happy New Year, so we will go into, we got our future meeting dates, we have Monday, February 5th, did I miss something? No, okay. Monday, February 5th, we have Monday, February 19th, we have Monday, March 5th, and we have Monday, March 19th, there is no meeting, so there's only one meeting in March, March 19th, that is the week of spring break, and we traditionally do not have our meeting. All of those are at 6:30, no, Bob, you have to come to a meeting that week, we're going to make sure of it. The new guys don't get off.
Spring break?
Nah, 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 you and Megan.
Panama City?
Okay. All righty, anything else with the good of the order from anyone? Nope, hearing none, meeting's adjourned.